Good evening. I'd like to call to order the public budget hearing and the special meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Wednesday, May 7, 2025. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
... to the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. I'd like to invite Mr. Berger up to the podium, and I'd like to ask the trustees to step down to the audience for viewing.
Good evening. On behalf of the Monroe Woodbury Middle School, our students, our staff, our faculty, and our community, we would like to welcome the Board of Education, Superintendent Norman, our central administrators, to the Monroe Woodbury Middle School. We have some incredibly talented students here this evening. I hope that you were able to take a glance at some of the artwork that is on display in the back of the auditorium. And we are very fortunate to have an incredibly talented group of students that would like to perform a couple of songs for you. We have joining us tonight some of the members. It's about half of our 7th and 8th grade chamber chorus that's led by one of our music teachers, Mr. Brian Clark. So I'd like to welcome our middle school students to the risers over here to perform a couple of songs. Thank you.
Well, we're getting set. This first one we sang at our winter concert. This is called Sing We Enchanted. It's an old English mago. We're going to sing it next night. If you're prepared to sing this one at our dismo- dismo-bakers evaluation on Monday afternoon. Hope you enjoy. I got my blue microphone right there. Sing we enchanted world of frantic, fa la 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 la, fa la la la. Sing we enchanted world of frantic, fa la 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 la, fa la la la. Not all you fastened and only chasing, now it's best better to take our pleasure. Fa la 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 la, fa la la la. Not all you fastened and only chasing, now it's best better to take our pleasure. Fa la 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 la, fa la la la. All things that light us now to be light us, fa la la la, fa la la la. And share we having no more be having, let's share no treasure to make in pleasure. Fa la 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 la, fa la la la. And share we having no more be having, let's share no treasure to make in pleasure. Fa la 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 la, fa la la la. We need one more selection that we sang last night. This is our guy's second night in the row. Selection from Wicked, One Short Bed. One short bed in the hour of sin. 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 That was beautiful, on par with a chorus I saw at a Broadway last weekend. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is, I need a motion for the approval of the revised agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then I'd like to invite Mrs. Polkenex up to the stage to present recognitions.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Norman and the members of the board. Thank you for taking the time to share this recognition with our students this evening. As mentioned, my name is Jackie Polkenex, and I am the FBLA advisor for the high school. I would like to introduce Joanna Scududo, Business Development Manager for the New York Blood Center. She is here this evening to present an award to our FBLA chapter. Here to receive that award and share this recognition with you is Praveen Jigun and Anya Mahultra, co-presidents, and Swathi Sathier-Morthi, our incoming president for next year. Thank you again. Joanna?
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. I'm proud to represent New York Blood Center to acknowledge the accomplishments of Monroe Woodbury FBLA Club. At the March 2025 blood drive, they collected their 5,000th blood donation since the year 2000. There is no substitute for blood. Our local hospitals rely on New York Blood Center and our partner organizations to provide blood for their patients. These students are true heroes. With one donation having the ability to save three lives, the Monroe Woodbury FBLA Club has saved over 15,000 lives, which is no small feat. The club works to advertise the event, educating their peers of the great need and encouraging them to roll up their sleeve to save a life. On the day of the blood drive, the FBLA students are critical to a smooth event, showing respect and gratitude for the donors as they check them in, assist donors through the different steps of the donation process, escort donors to the after-donation snacks, and also thank them for their donation. New York Blood Center's partnership with Monroe Woodbury FBLA is greatly appreciated and valued. We look forward to many more years to come and lives to be saved. Please join me in recognizing the great civic work of these students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our public budget hearing presentation by Mr. Cahill.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm here tonight to talk about our '25-'26 general fund budget, and this is the statutory budget hearing night. And the budget hearing is a requirement in New York State. We have to hold a hearing no less than seven days prior to the budget vote date and no more than 14 days, so we're within that window. And I'll just say the budget vote date in New York State this year is May 20, and the vote for Monroe Woodbury will be at Central Valley Elementary School from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. One thing I wanted to mention before we fully get into this is, I would just say the, I've said this before, the stakes are a bit higher this year for the budget vote because we're actually, in addition to the general fund budget, which is Proposition 1, we're also asking the community to decide on or approve a Proposition 2, which is related to capital project and capital spending. So this would be an additional $16.6 million, which would complement our existing $98 million capital program. I'm going to get into the details of what that involves and the scope in just a moment. So our budget priorities for next year are very much the same as the current year priorities, safety and security, maintain programs that support the needs of our students, and provide staff with resources and professional development that align with New York State standards. So in terms of safety and security, we have $120,000 budgeted in the general fund budget for next year for the Central Valley Elementary School security vestibule. We have monies in the budget next year for a panic alarm system. So New York State, approximately two or three years ago, there was a law passed called Alyssa's Law, which required school districts to consider panic alarm systems. So we have budgeted monies in next year's budget for that system. You know, in terms of supporting the needs of students, we have some new teachers in next year's budget. We have some special ed teachers, ENL teacher. We also have a substantial appropriation for special needs students for out-of-district placements as well. And in terms of the professional development and curriculum, we have a relatively new reading program, which we are continuing to roll out for next year, and we've budgeted monies for a version 3 of that program and additional PD and materials required for that program. Whoops. So we've looked at some of these slides before. I won't go over it in detail, but this is a slide that details the computation of the tax cap, and sometimes this is called the 2% tax cap. And it's called the 2% tax cap because in the middle of this computation, right here, there's something called the allowable growth factor. And the allowable growth factor is a factor in the computation which is the lesser of 2% or the rate of inflation. And that's where they get the idea of calling this a 2% tax cap. But it rarely is exactly 2% because you go through a computation. And obviously, I won't go through the entire thing, but the takeaway here is when you run the formula and you come up with our allowable maximum increase for next year, it's 3.55% right here, and we're proposing a levy increase of 1.5%. So 1.5% for next year. That's the proposal, and that is the sixth year in a row Monroe Woodbury has levied below our tax cap. And so this slide represents our budget recommendation and Proposition 2, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about Proposition 2 in just a moment. So we're proposing that Proposition 1 is the total general fund budget, and it's a $236.7 million budget. It's a budget-to-budget increase of 5.88%. It's kind of hard to see, but I have a little text box here which shows that. And that, I would say that is a slightly higher than would be typical increase, budget-to-budget increase. I mentioned some of the items that were part of that budget. We also have nine buses that we're buying for next year. That was part of that, as well as contract transportation increases. But the important part here for our taxpayers is the tax levy increase is 1.5%. And we're able to do that because we received an increase in state aid, and we're also using "fund balance," and I have "fund balance" in quotes here because "fund balance" is both reserves, and it can also be unassigned fund balance. And we're proposing to use 2.47 million of our reserves, which are like our savings the district has, and 1.4 million from, call it, "assigned fund balance," which would be surplus that we anticipate from the current year. So you often hear that as the give-back to the taxpayers, and that's what it is. And it enables us to, as I say here, reduce the required levy increase. So we had a 5.88% increase in the budget, but only a 1.5% increase in the levy because we're using some of our reserves and some of our fund balance for that. And then Proposition 2, we show some of the numbers here. I mentioned 16.6 million is the estimated total cost, a cost not to exceed 16.6 million. And we have it as a proposition because in New York State, capital projects require voter approval. And the use of our capital reserve, you notice here, we're proposing to use 5.3 million of our capital reserve, also requires voter approval. And the good news, and I'm going to get into the finances of it in just a moment, is we're proposing this, we planned this and engineered this to have no tax impact. And we're able to do that because through New York State Building Aid, approximately 70% of the project is paid for, in this case, over a 15-year period. And the building aid we're going to receive based on the projects or this authorization will equal or exceed the cost of repaying this 11.3 million, which we would borrow. So I'll repeat that. The building aid will equal or exceed the cost of repaying the borrowing. And that's how, and we've planned it that way, that this project will have no tax impact. And I mentioned here, so this would be Proposition 2. We'll see that on the ballot, and it's new, and it's a non-recurring item, capital proposition authorizing additional capital projects. So, next slide, what are we talking about with Proposition 2? So Proposition 2, I've touched on a little bit. It's a proposed capital project with an estimated cost of 16.6 million, which will complement our existing $98 million capital program, which was approved in December of 2023. And I just, I've done a few of these presentations, and I just want to talk a little bit about our existing program. That is about to start this summer, this spring and summer. Phase 1 of that will start, and it'll start with a series of security vestibules we're doing at Smith Clover, Pine Tree, and Sapphire. And it'll start with a boiler replacement at Smith Clover, and a boiler replacement at the high school, and also work at the education center. New roof, new windows, and repointing. So that is starting this summer, and that will take us four to five years to complete. And what we're talking about with Proposition 2 are projects which complement that, which work in unison with that. Again, I talked a little bit about why we're asking for voter approval, because in New York State, capital projects, including modifying the scope of an existing project or initiating something new, require the voters to authorize us to do that. So that's why it's on the ballot. And so let's get into the scope a little bit more. So the project scope, and this is kind of exciting, I got to admit, we're talking about adding central air conditioning to three of our elementary schools. Pine Tree, North Main, and Central Valley Elementary School classrooms, offices, and assembly spaces would get central air conditioning. Why only these three schools? I've heard that question many times. Because these schools are slated to receive new heating systems. We're going from a steam system to a hot water hydronic system, which makes adding air conditioning now easier and much, much more cost-effective. Adding at a later date would be much more costly, and I've used this analogy. We are doing sort of this steam-to-water conversion. It's new boilers in the basement. It's new piping that will run through the building, through chases, through the ceiling, down into new unit ventilators in every space, every classroom. So by adding an additional pipe and a slightly different unit ventilator, we have air conditioning. So it's because of the nature of the work that's occurring at those three schools, we can so cost-effectively add the air conditioning as part of our Proposition 2. And I have a little, it's kind of a half a joke, timing is everything. This is really a great time to do it, and it's a really, it's a really cost-effective time to do this. I mean, the other piece that we've mentioned out of the meetings is now a law in New York State, the heat index law, where classrooms, and I think workspaces, when they hit 82 degrees, we're required to try to start to mitigate the heat, and when they hit 88 degrees or become hotter than 88, we're no longer able to occupy the space. So it's now law that we have to sort of intervene, and you know, this is a really good way to do that for these three buildings. The other big piece of Proposition 2 is enclosing the classrooms at North Main, so that's going to enhance our security there and our instructional functionality. We're upgrading electrical capacity at the middle school, Smith Clover and Sapphire. That's going to enable us to install window units, and they're fairly substantial. We had our architects sort of spec this plan out. They're two-ton units, which will adequately cool the classrooms, to condition those classrooms. And then finally, there's a handful of miscellaneous things. There's roof drain, plumbing, and pathway work, some abatement work, and some work at the ed center as part of that. But the bulk of it, over 90%, is the air conditioning at Pine Tree, North Main, and enclosing the classrooms at North Main. And finally, the financial or tax impact, none. And I've talked a little bit about that. The project has been planned, so that New York State Building Aid will equal or exceed the cost of the bond repayment. Use of the reserve, and this is monies that we had set aside last year, will cover the local share, which would not be reimbursed. So it's an effective way to handle this and do this, and the timing is really good and complemented by our other project. Contingent budget rules, so in New York State, if the budget is not approved on two separate occasions, school districts are required to adopt a contingency budget. So the contingent budget has a series of mandatory cuts, such as equipment and use of facilities by the community when there's an expense involved. But the biggest, most onerous part of the contingent budget is there can be no increase in the tax levy. So for us, for next year, that would be approximately a $1.97 million reduction in the budget that we would have to go through, which would be fairly substantial. That's the contingent budget rules. And finally, the upcoming budget dates. So tonight is our statutory budget hearing. We're going to mail our budget notice tomorrow, which will have more information, obviously, about the budget, but also about the Proposition 2. We're going to do a Crusader Chat in the very near future, and then the big day is May 20, the annual budget vote date in New York State. And that'll be at Central Valley Elementary School, basically all day, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 And that is everything I had in a nutshell. Are there any questions? Okay, all good?
All good.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone.
I'd like to open up comments from interested citizens on the public budget hearing. Mr. McElroy? McElroy? Sorry.
It's okay, I've been called worse. I promise not to sing show tunes unless that'll help. So, good evening, Dr. Norman, Cabinet, President Tower, members of the board, and members of the Monroe Woodbury community. My name is Daryl McElroy, and I'm the president of the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association. I'm here tonight on behalf of the MWTA to speak in support of the proposed '25-'26 budget and Proposition 2. We believe that the budget presented by the superintendent and the board is not only fiscally responsible, but also maintains current programs and staffing so that students will continue to get many of the supports they need to be successful. And if you were impressed in any way by what you heard earlier this evening, or the awards that our students are able to get on behalf of their classmates, the school community, that's why we're doing what we're doing and why this budget should be supported. On a personal note, I want to thank the superintendent for crafting this, his first budget, with a willingness to include all stakeholders in the process. We are grateful that we don't find ourselves in the position that some neighboring school districts find themselves in, and we also realize that resources are not infinite. This budget is an acknowledgement of the needs that we have brought forward on behalf of our students and members, and it represents a positive step and down payment on future investments that will improve student outcomes and quality of life. We will always continue to advocate for what we think is best for our students and members because there's always more work to be done. We happen to be halfway through National Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Week, and today happens to be School Nurse Appreciation Day, so I want to shout out our wonderful school nurses who are doing the Lord's work every day with problems, big and small. And we're grateful for all of our members and all the things that they're doing to, you know, educate students and represent the profession well. We were actually fortunate to have NICE@President Melinda Person here in early April, and she visited with teachers, SRPs, and students in several of our school buildings. And not surprisingly, she was very impressed with everything that she saw, including the Little Miracles program at the high school, the music students in the Chamber Orchestra Ensemble, the science research students at the high school. We took her to see the UPK program at Sapphire. She saw Grade 2 classroom in Pine Tree, and 812 classroom in Pine Tree. And then finally, we came here and met with some members at the middle school. She even shouted us out at her keynote address, because Monroe Woodbury is doing great things. And it's a testament, really, to what we're able to do when we work together. Just one year ago, I was here talking about air conditioning, and here we are, finally making some progress on these critical upgrades for climate control. Some people may think it's a luxury, but I can tell you, even as I'm standing here right now, it is necessary. Students and staff will perform much better when they are able to be comfortable and safe in our classrooms. And Proposition 2 is a no-brainer. It's tax-neutral. It does a significant, you know, job in making these improvements, so I would encourage people to support that. I'm allowed to say that. It's easy to get distracted, obviously, by a lot of the noise that surrounds us, but when we focus on what's important, we are able to do really, really good things. And I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to address the board. I look forward to continued and future collaboration. I would again strongly encourage the members of the community, especially my members, to support Proposition 1 and Proposition 2. On Tuesday, May 20, at Central Valley Elementary School, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., polls are open. Vote early, vote often. Happy birthday, by the way, Mom, if you're watching. Birthday's tomorrow. And happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy.
She even shouted us out at her keynote address because Monroe Woodbury is doing great things. And it's a testament, really, to what we're able to do when we work together. Just one year ago, I was here talking about air conditioning, and here we are, finally making some progress on these critical upgrades for climate control. Some people may think it's a luxury, but I can tell you, even as I'm standing here right now, it is necessary. Students and staff will perform much better when they are able to be comfortable and safe in our classrooms. And Proposition Two is a no-brainer. It's tax-neutral. It does a significant, you know, job in making these improvements. So I would encourage people to support that. I'm allowed to say that. It's easy to get distracted, obviously, by a lot of the noise that surrounds us, but when we focus on what's important, we are able to do really, really good things. And I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to address the board. I look forward to continued and future collaboration. I would again strongly encourage the members of the community, especially my members, to support Proposition One and Proposition Two. On Tuesday, May the 20th, at Central Valley Elementary School, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., polls are open. Vote early, vote often. Happy birthday, by the way, Mom, if you're watching. Birthday's tomorrow. And happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. Okay. Next is your motion for the approval of minutes from the April 24, 2025 meeting.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Ms. Hock for Personnel.
Thank you. I'd like to request approval from the board for the items listed under Personnel this evening.
Are there any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Mr. Cahill for Business and Financial.
Thank you. I would respectfully request approval of business and financial items 8.1 through 8.7.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval for, motion for the committees on special education and preschool, special education recommendations. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next is our Student Board of Education Representative, Mr. Escobar.
Hey, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. I was fighting for my life this week with AP tests, but I'm done now. I don't know how I'm still here, but I made it. I have a quick report on my visit with North Main, which was my final visit to a school as a part of my second round of visits to the 2 through 5 schools. If you remember, the data I was collecting was on student relationships with their peers. I won't go into all the details of that again, but the data from my visit showed the same trends that were seen in the data from Pine Tree and Central Valley. So just to go over some of the things that were shown, students feel safe inside of these buildings with an overwhelming amount of yeses to the question, "Do you feel safe in school?" A lot of students talked about how they made classmates upset. They answered yes to a question that said, "Have you ever made a classmate upset?" But they recognized this in their extended response to it. I think allowing students to talk openly about the mistakes they've made and encouraging that kind of growth creates an environment where people improve, and it helps to emphasize growing and changing as people. The primary conclusion from this data, just like Pine Tree and Central Valley, was that a lot of students expressed that they don't tell their teacher certain things because they don't want to cause drama or be a tattletale. So I still suggest that some form of anonymous message box be set up in classrooms that would allow students to communicate these problems in a more confidential way. And that's all I have for today. With that, I've visited every single school in the district twice now, and I believe the next meeting I'm scheduled to be at will be my last one as Board of Education Representative, so that's pretty crazy. I have some final thoughts outlined for that meeting, and I'm excited to share those with you all next time. And I'm also excited to be taking part in the interview process for the next Student Board of Education Representative. And so congratulations to all the candidates who have made it in that process, and to all the students who did not receive the invite to come interview. It was still amazing to put in that application and go for this position. Everyone who did was an amazing, talented student, I know that. Yeah, I'm also excited to be at the academic award ceremony tomorrow. I was invited to, say, the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be really nice. Yeah, so that's pretty much everything I have for today. And yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. Okay. And Dr. Morales, any closing comments?
Just a few. I'd like to thank Mr. Clark and the members of the chorus tonight. Their performance was nothing short of amazing. I'd like to thank the members of the FBLA for their efforts and congratulate them on a well-deserved recognition. Similar to Dylan, I think that our elementary team is also happy to announce that testing is mostly wrapping up with state testing, just with one more day of third grade in our nicest lot. I had the privilege of attending Pine Tree's multicultural night. It was so much fun to see so many students. It was a wonderful turnout, excited to share their cultures. Attended the district art show, and again, just amazing work by so many different students at all of our grade levels. And a final thank you to our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week and our nurses as well for all you do every day in and out of the classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, just like to echo some of the things that Dr. Morales said and wish everyone a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Vias?
Shout out to Pine Tree hosting an amazing multicultural night. It was a really good experience. I loved that passport idea. Went home and started to find my son's passport when he was in that age group. So a big shout out to Pine Tree. Thank you, Middle School and admin team to hosting us. The kids were amazing as well. Distraction-free learning committee. So we've been meeting for last about four months. What this committee's charge is to look for what is the governor's proposed mandate might come down. And at this point, we are developing two options. One option is, what does this mean when the governor passes the budget and then part of that budget, it's called bell-to-bell mandate? That means that the students would not be allowed to use the cell phone during their time within the school building. The other option is more on a soft launch, what we call internally, is if there is an option to have some local decision-making, what does that mean to us? Should we allow the students to use that for during non-instructional time or not? And this committee comprises of 42 members. It's a rather larger committee and a variety of different stakeholders, teachers, guidance counselors, administrators, students, assistant superintendents, my colleagues. And what, as of now, where we are today, is we are developing these two options I described earlier. And in our last committee meeting that we met last week, we have formed the subcommittees. So the one team would be at the middle school, one would be at the high school, and one would be at the K5. And those committees, these subcommittees, would be developing the process in case if the governor comes down to, say, a bell-to-bell schedule, a bell-to-bell mandate for the cell phone as well as the electronic devices. We are also looking at the current NISP policy and making sure that we are adapting to that policy based on what would come down from the governor's office. We'll keep you in the loop, but that's kind of what the status we have as of now.
Okay.
Are we allowed to ask questions or no?
Can you? Sure.
Okay. So is the, do we know if, based on the soft piece of it, that each school would have to do the same thing? So for instance, you have the subcommittees. Does that mean that if we adopt the bell-to-bell, if that's what the governor says, that each of our buildings will do the same? Or is it based on age?
We are looking at both options. We are looking at what does this mean for our secondary students versus what does it mean to our K5 students?
So it could be different, then?
It is possible that it would be two different options as well. We have done, the committee has done a lot of research, and there are some interesting trends out there that we could actually follow.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Vias. Dr. Hassler?
Sure. Just to kind of continue on everybody else, thank you to the middle school for hosting. Congrats, FBLA. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. The art show was awesome. We have, this is sort of the beginning of award season, as Dylan mentioned. We have a lot of different recognitions that are happening right now. All of our honor societies are having inductions, so congrats to everybody that's being recognized in the upcoming weeks. Special Olympics was awesome. We're going to be recognizing our Special Olympiads at June meeting, but that competition was absolutely outstanding. The board also asked me to give a quick update regarding the Guidance Advisory Council, which is one of our district goals. And just a reminder, the district goal was to conduct a review of our K-12 guidance program and ensure that it is fully aligned with the commissioner's regulations regarding New York State guidance programs. The committee has been doing an extensive amount of work. That work recently has been around the mapping of, the state provides a recommended template to map out your K-12 guidance plan. And we have subcommittees at the elementary, middle and high school level, and they've mapped out all of the guidance services and programs that we offer across the school district, and they've aligned them to all of the required state standards, and they've identified what the assessment measures will be for each of those services. We're now in the process of compiling those guidance program delivery maps into our guidance program plan that will present it to the Board of Education. The guidance plan has to be approved by the board on an annual basis, and that will be in place and presented to the board for approval for the 25-26 school year. We're already in the process of planning for next year, where we now, now that we have it outlined and mapped on these delivery maps of, excuse me, identifying gaps and finding areas where there's three sets of standards that the guidance program is intended to provide support to our kids. Academically, social-emotional learning and career development skills. And we're now in the process of going through all of those standards to ensure that we provide services uniformly across the board and equitably in all grade levels. So that's sort of the next phase of the analysis that we're going to be doing. We anticipate meeting at least one more time before the end of the school year to at least compile it into the guidance plan. And then there's also a state-required assessment tool, and we'll be doing an end-of-the-year assessment as well to evaluate what our progress is. So still more to come in terms of our work.
Thank you. Ms. Hock?
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate a few individuals who are in our audience this evening and were appointed tonight in their positions. First, we have Lauren Kapool. Lauren Kapool, if you could raise your hand, Lauren. Lauren is currently a special education teacher at our high school, who this evening was appointed as our new CSC chairperson. Congratulations. Also in our audience, oh, you can clap again. Also in our audience tonight and on our agenda this evening as a special appointment is Laney Valet. Laney, raise your hand. Thank you. Laney is going to be our new dean of students at the high school beginning this summer. So congratulations to you, Laney, and welcome to the Monroe Woodbury family.
Thank you. Ms. Novak?
Thank you. I echo all the recognition that was given so far. And I also wanted to just take a moment to recognize the young writers of our school that were featured in the Photo News two weeks ago. For those of you who may not know, the Photo News is a local paper that has some distribution in our district, and once a year, it features writers from our elementary schools. So the elementary students, there's a select few of them from each school, each class, featured in this paper, and they write about topics about what inspires them or what are some good memories. And I love this. I go through all of it. I love it for two reasons. One, it demonstrates our growth. So you can see the kindergarten, first grade, all through fifth grade, how the writing just grows and grows and the talent that you see with our students. But it also shows the great instruction that they're receiving, and that's because most of these writers are calling out their instructors as their source of inspiration. So I just wanted to take a moment to add this to the recognition with the art show and all of these other things, to bring your attention to that and really recognize these young writers and their instructors. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Yeah. The course was amazing. Thank you so much. I can't get over how talented the students in this district are. They're just amazing. And congratulations to our FBLA students. I also attended the Pine Tree Multicultural Evening. It was amazing. I went with Caitlin. We had such a good time. It was really so much fun, and the passport was a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Cahill, and your staff for the budget presentation, and thank you to the middle school for hosting us. The mural is gorgeous. It's absolutely stunning. And at Teacher Appreciation Week, I'd like to thank all the teachers and nurses for everything you do. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Simmons?
I'm just going to echo. It's going to be like a broken record, but I also really am floored every time I go to a presentation of talent of students in this district. I was honored to be a part of the district art show the other day at the high school. The level of talent, attention to detail, the art, the sculptures, it was like walking through the most expensive Parisian museum to look at the most sophisticated art projects. And each of them had a story when you spoke to the young artists, and it was just super inspiring, and the level of talent in this district, beyond, beyond amazing. As Ms. Donahue said, we had the honor of attending the Pine Tree Multicultural Night. We had some delicious food, had some wonderful conversations, and all of the parents and family members that we spoke to, they all mirrored the same sentiment, that this district and the schools and the staff members are all just exceeded their expectations in terms of they all just feel comfortable leaving their children here, knowing that we celebrate diversity, knowing that everyone from every part of the world feels welcome here. And I said this before, but Monroe Woodbury, it envelopes you, and you just feel like it's a part of one big family, and I think that was a great presentation of that. Congratulations to all of the honor society students, and happy Teachers Appreciation Week, happy Public Servant Recognition Week as well, and happy Nurses Week. So thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mrs. McClery?
Thank you. I just want to mention, because it'll take place prior to our next public meeting, but our next capital project meeting that's open to the public is Thursday, June 12th. That will be our last one for the school year. Thank you to the middle school for hosting us. It's always great to come and see the buildings and get an opportunity to see what the kids are working on. The mural was beautiful. We appreciate the early invitation, so we had a chance to view it. Thanks to Patrick for the budget presentation. It's always insightful, and I know that we've had questions behind the scenes, but I think hopefully the public is aware of how much effort goes into it, and should there be any other questions that people are reaching out to you? I think there's a Crusader Chat coming up. I think somebody asked me about that, and I told them to check the website. So hopefully, if there are any questions, they're getting their information. Thank you to the new hires, welcome to the school district, and to the transfers. And I want to just say a thank you to Taryn, as this evening, unfortunately, she is on our resignation list. She has been an excellent district clerk, and I wish her all the best in her new journey, and thank you for your service to the board.
Mr. Reynolds?
I concur with all my teammates, obviously, especially our blood-dry folks, as someone who's, someone else's blood saved my life, so I greatly appreciate that. And get out and vote, right? And I will say, do the right thing when it comes to that, right? There's a lot of great things going on in our district, and we need money to do that. And Patrick and the team has done a fine, a great way to keep our taxes low and execute what our children need. So again, it's about the kids, so remember that when you get out and vote. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Mrs. Robinson?
I just want to echo everyone's statements, but I also really thought I was going to get through everybody and be the one to thank, Taryn, but I guess not. It's hard being in this seat. But that's it, and have a great night and go Knicks.
Yay!
Thank you. Helen, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah. Congratulations to the FBLA students who received the award today. You guys are awesome. I know a lot of you. I want to shout out all of the students who participated in the trip to DC last week. They competed in a musical competition, all of the different groups in our school, voice ensemble, wind ensemble, et cetera, all of them. And we swept, so that's what Monroe Woodbury does. The art show was absolutely amazing. I got to go, and the talent is amazing. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to shout out Mr. McElroy on your speech just now. It was very well-spoken, and I love the work that you guys are doing to represent our teachers in the district. It's critically important, so thank you. And happy Mother's Day as well. Hi, Mom. Happy Mother's Day. And I just found out about the thing about Ms. Clark, and she has helped me so much in this process of being the board rep. I want to give you a little more of a formal thank you at my last meeting, but just right now, thank you so much for everything you've done for me. And yeah, I hope everyone has a great evening.
Thank you. Superintendent Norman?
Good evening, everyone. So much has been said, and I'll certainly try and brief my exception, but I do echo all the sentiments of acknowledgement and gratitude. Thank you, Mr. Berger, for being a great host tonight. I too attended our art show last Friday, my wife and I. Enough said. We have talented students, and I certainly want to acknowledge them for their work and all the beauty that they bring to our district. FBLA students, our chorus, thank you for what you do, what you represent. This week, we are acknowledging teachers, nurses, our transportation workers, and not just them, because they're on the calendar, but everyone. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you for all that you do, every single day. You matter. Thank you, Mr. Cahill, for such a great budget presentation. I know we've been going at this for months now. I also want to acknowledge the cabinet for your updates. Very informative. Thank you. Getting back to- Getting back to the budget, this week, we will make our way to the senior centers, and I do encourage the public to ask us questions, and we want to share. We want everyone to know all the great things that we're doing. So please, let us know what you want to know more about, and thank you for all the work behind the scene for making this happen. Happy Mother's Day and good evening.
Thank you. Well, I think I'm definitely going to echo a lot of what was said tonight. First, thank you to Mr. Berger and the middle school administration, and the building looks beautiful and clean, and the artwork in the back of the auditorium. Thank you for sharing that with us. That was part of the art exhibit over the weekend that I attended with Mrs. Simmons and Ms. Novak, opening night. Like everyone said, it was absolutely unbelievable, the talent and the inspiration, and a lot of those pieces back there, I remember, and they were done by some of our very young students in the middle school as well. So the level of talent is definitely very, very high. The chamber chorus was beautiful. Wow, it really sounds like you're at a Broadway show. And FBLA reaching their milestone. I also like to thank Mrs. Polkenex for her leadership with the FBLA students. I know that she's been very instrumental over the years in having a big impact on our students and what they do after they leave us with civic engagement and being involved in their community. So thank you for mentoring them and leading them. And yes, today is School Nurse Appreciation Day, so thank you to our school nurses. And Teacher Appreciation Month, should be every month, right? We're thankful for everybody, every day. Thank you to the MW Teachers Association, Mr. McElroy, for your comments and your support of the budget. And I am looking very forward to attending tomorrow evening's academic awards for our seniors at the high school. So with that, have a good night. Come out and vote for the budget and the Board of Education trustees on May 20th. Happy Mother's Day. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.